And relax. Go to there. Here we are, 10:30 on Tuesday, August 17th, 2021. For our meeting and whole session. Well, everybody, thank you for being here. We have our agenda, we have our minutes. And I guess just our benefits. It's a work session, so we won't be taking any action. It's just an opportunity for us to ask questions, have a conversation, learn, share, and collaborate. So we won't, we won't need to make motions or anything like that. So, uh, we have our agenda and minutes. The second thing on the agenda is presentations. The first thing is the discussion of the 1% lodging tax. And this is the second opportunity we've had to talk about this. I really appreciate both the first time as well as your willingness to come the second time. Because there is a lot of conversation out about, a lot of confusion, a lot of misinformation, and, and concerns as well, just about where we have been, where we're now, where we're heading. And so, uh, I've certainly received a lot of feedback and a lot of good proof of thought and conversations. There is the lodging tax FAQ attached in our agenda. I'm hoping that we all had a chance to look through that. Obviously informative and really proactive and good information. Has this been shared lively yet? Or, okay.
No.
It's brand new?
It's brand new, based on our meeting of June. And knowing that the, some of the questions that came out of that. And then also, you know, with the idea of coming out of COVID and sustainable tourism and what that looks like in Cook County. And also the misinformation and obviously the misunderstanding around the lodging tax of 1% and the sales tax of 1%.
Right.
We took it upon ourselves within the VisiCook County team to create this FAQ. Hoping that we can, you know, if it's helpful to you, we feel it's going to be helpful to our community. And just knowing if, if this does move forward with endorsement from the commissioners, that, that we will then work on an education process with the community members and with our tourism stakeholders.
So there's two small details that I thought we should talk about in regards to FAQ. And everyone pitching and whatever as, as they see fit. The first one, and maybe this is split in pairs, but I just want to be as accurate and straight as possible here, was in the second to last answer. First paragraph. First, first of all, I'm just very happy in place of the whole thing. I think it's great, awesome work. But it was, um, yeah, in Cook County, we have a strong healthcare system, six grocery stores, recreational businesses like this, not in a health insurance or medical school. I, I, maybe they should speak for themselves, but I'm guessing they'll say they're an educational facility or some kind of organization versus recreational business. But they certainly are significantly in our community and continuing to grow and expand. We can definitely see that. But so there is that. And again, apologize if this is too detailed. And the other one was in the last answer, which I think is, again, a very important thing to bring up and point out, uh, the last answer. Is that even it?
I don't know.
Yeah. Sorry, yeah, wasn't it? It was something about that, though. It was something about the sales tax. Apologies. Oh, no, it was the second paragraph of the second, the last answer. Again. From the influx of sales tax and property tax dollars into the county budget. I feel like, uh, the, the, the sentence, influx of sales tax into the county budget is a little misleading. Whereas the county does manage that. It doesn't go into our budget, our operational budget. It goes just to the 1% projects. And so that, and the county board had to, you know, approve that. But it's not like we can just keep taking money in from the sales tax and put it into operations. So those are the only, and clearly the level of detail I was looking at this, maybe the other book is necessary. And that's all I could find, so.
Woo-hoo, we're in team! Maybe we should just say with the addition rather than the influx. See, that word influx feels like, oh my God, waves of money. And if we say with the addition of sales tax and property tax. Does that feel better?
Money budget and funded projects or?
Well, so the, this, I guess what I had issue with, influx is kind of a loaded word, I guess.
Aren't you?
But, um, so thank you. I, I, but more of just that sales tax doesn't go anywhere. That is only for the 1% projects. And so it does not go into human services, does not go into law enforcement, does not go into road vehicles.
It doesn't necessarily belong in that, okay?
Right. That's where I was going. Uh, but I do think that's the last question addresses that. That it does go somewhere and it does stay here. And it does, well, for the projects that the county board had approved in the past and all that. So I think the last question does address that. But it just, it just, I didn't make that. It doesn't mean wrong.
We can even, like, remove that paragraph. Because it kind of leads into the next question and answer. I like the Living Like a Local piece. Okay. We'll tweak that piece.
Yeah, I just, I, I mean, it's not our document, it's your document. I just want to give a little feedback.
No, but that, we value your opinion. And if you're picking up on that, believe me, there will be others.
Yeah. Were there any other questions or concerns about this particular document from, from commissioners or?
I just appreciated it. It addressed so many questions that I've received in my interactions with, you know, people living in my district. And I think it, it really helps to explain that 1%. I think it's a great tool. And I'm curious about how we want to use this. You know, how are we going to share this with the public?
Well, we've talked about many ways. What I've been explaining to members of our board is, and to you all, is hopefully we'll be able to receive the endorsement by the county commissioners as early as next week. Because we have a lot of work to do with our legislators. We plan on doing some work with Northern Wilds in Cook County's Herald, also online. It will be on our website. We'll share that information, that you can find it in our media room on our website. We're really sensitive as a team right now to all the conversation that is happening in our community about the use of lodging tax. And, um, so we really want to get that out there in a thoughtful manner, which is why we did this, this amount of work. So, and if we, if you have suggestions and ways to share it, I'm also thinking about, like, attending a city council meeting of Grand Wright and doing a presentation so people understand it there as well. So, um, I don't have any problem getting it up in front of groups and doing that education process. I think it's really immediate and necessary right now. Just with the optic on tourism and sustainable tourism. So it will only benefit all of us if we can tell this story correctly going forward. So if you have ideas to.
So you mentioned the News Herald and Northern Wilds. I would also consider the L'Oreal.
Yeah, okay.
I'd like to make a share of all on, on social media then. Hey, I'm going real quick.
Yeah. I'm sure we'll get to some of those pages rather quickly, like the Grand Wright community page.
Right.
Probably do something again in WTIP. Lilly and I did a pretty extensive interview with them a couple of months ago. So we would have years of that opportunity as well.
Go ahead, please.
Okay, I want to ask the question. Why says, why can't lodging tax be used for housing or over local programs? And yes, I agree. It's unique to Cook County. It's not a state statute today. Doesn't mean it couldn't be there in two years. So let's address it, let's talk about that. We can advocate to use some of that money for housing. That's possible.
Yeah. And, um, yes, we can also advocate for, um, at any time. And so what, what I think is important is to recognize the impacts of what we have going on right now. Recognize the very, maybe robust isn't the right word. We have a very strong tourism economy. And so, uh, and we may need help, um, from the chamber. We definitely need help from the chamber. And just help navigate the state and what, what is going to be most effective. I don't want to undercut the things we got going on. Talking to our regional peers, even our statewide peers about the impacts that the pandemic has had on their economies, we fare very well. And I kind of believe it is in large part because of our good reputation, our robust, our, our strong tourism economy. And, and other areas do have that, but for whatever reason, not as much. And so I kind of believe it's partnerships and communication and, and promotion as well, education. What I especially appreciate is the willingness of DCC to, is to look at other ways that the 1% can be used instead of just blasting promotion out there, billboards in the cities, with the, with the different education pieces for visitors that are coming here that aren't here, whether it be legal trace or, or public health, you know, guidance and promoting that. And that also encourages a very healthy community. And so, uh, this leads into our, our, our number three item on the agenda. So I'm very, you know, reluctant to go there already because I think we need to talk more about this item. But I think there are other ways to address without undercutting the good things we have going on. So we can advocate for that. And maybe, maybe it's going to come down to it. I'm not convinced yet that that's the path we should go. I feel more like we should build up our strengths, work with the good things we have going on, and adjust, tweak, refocus if necessary. But it seems more productive that way. But that's just my, that's just my take on it. You know, Mr. Lawson, please.
Well, I would, I would also offer up that I think part of the reason that we had such a large amount of people that came to our area was because our efforts here in the community through public health and all of the, you know, the, the hospital, the clinic and everyone, and our low rates of infection here were enticing to some people to come up here as well. I, I offer up to you, though, maybe, maybe in this discussion we can think about that intersection of the tourism and the housing and how that comes together. Because of course, we want the tourists to come. Our, our economy is based on that. But at the same time, as Rena Rogers pointed out to us, when you struggle to get the people to perform the jobs and services that make that experience really unique. Of course, we have our, you know, the environment and the shore and, you know, all of the things, the Gunflint Trail and everything that we have. But it takes people to provide the experience. And, and I really think that is where that intersection comes together, where we can look at. If you're going to have a conversation about that 1%, that's actually, you know, for promotion, but it's also to ensure that the people get the experience when they show up at our community and in our area to do that. And, and that, I think if you, if we look at it from that, we might find common ground to have that conversation to at least explore if there's something to be had there. It's a thought.
So this, this does go straight into the next item on the agenda. So I'm going to throw it out there.
Can I, can I answer?
Sure, yeah.
First of all, I want to make, I want to recognize that we have two board members here. So that's why these two lovely ladies are here.
Hello, thank you.
So Jennifer Kennedy is the chair of our board. So I just wanted to let you know. And my person behind me is a pass member of our board as well. So let's do this. I wanted to say to your question, it's not like, it's not that, truthfully, it's, there's a covenant around a lodging tax collection. And that, even though we have a special endorsement of that 1%, the covenants around that still remain about using it for event promotion and programming. That's the piece where it, that's where it says no. And if we bring something to the legislature, our legislators right now about, hey, we want to divert this 1% lodging tax collection to housing, that is way off what lodging tax is used for. Not that there can't be some funding source found to promote lodging. It's just not what lodging tax is, has ever been used for. It stays within the lane of tourism and promotion.
And I'm just going to say, it's not, though the 1% collection is unique to Cook County, lodging tax collection is not.
Right.
So to change the statute around lodging tax would change it for the entire state. And that's what, I'm not advocating for that. I'm not advocating changing the 3%. I'm raising the question about the 1%, which I do not want to totally eliminate your budget. I mean, that's not my intention at all. But your budget, I mean, this last year that you presented to us was a half a million dollars. There's been 6% average increase in lodging sales over the last eight years. Guess that maybe that will continue. I kind of think this year we're, we're way on that. But let's average it out for six years. In five years, you'll have $700,000 budget. And I'm saying, we as taxpayers have a need. And I have to be accountable for taxpayer dollars. And I'm just like, okay, what else can be out there if we know that lodging tax is going to increase?
Let me back it up. The lodging tax, whether it's three or one, still holds the covenants of lodging tax. And it's not paid by the community. It's paid by our visitors when they sleep in our bed, whether it's three or one. The one still has the covenants around event marketing and promotion. It doesn't bleed into other areas like housing, building houses, building parks, building arenas.
Could you just say that lodging tax, there could be another funding source for it?
Well, so, so I think, um, where we're at is that we have the law and for what it's used for. What Commissioner Hopkins is suggesting is that we can change the law. We can tweak the law. And, and, um, and I think that's where there may be a difference in strategy. And this, again, for my third attempt, I'll bring it to the next side of the agenda. We can go back and forth. But what I think might be a stronger sell to the state is having, uh, so I think this 1%, clearly it's very unique, right? Cook County's got it.
Lake, Lake County actually has a gun to it.
Well, dang it. So, no, it's great. It's still, yeah, it's still just not as special. It's, it's, it's pretty unique. And, and I value that. I value the uniqueness, I value the flexibility. I don't want to jeopardize it because I do believe that it has done a great amount of good. A person could argue maybe too much good. I don't know if that's necessarily the case, but the flexibility is something I really like. Where I was going to suggest is instead of changing the unique, rare legislation we have is to say, hey, state, this is a statewide issue as the national issue, housing. Why don't you give us the option as a locality to add a 1% lodging tax to go to HRAs? An HRA would manage the money. That's the board, much like the EDA and the director. That keeps it separate. You don't jeopardize our 1% hope. I mean, that's my hope. Maybe they'll look, maybe they won't see them as separate. But that'll give us resources that it's not a burden on the local taxpayers to help address the, uh, the strong numbers we have coming in of, of local residents. I just think that strategy, I do see, uh, a pushback that I've seen in the community. It's just that, um, some of us feel that we already taxed isn't enough. And so that's the one pushback I can see. I don't have a whole lot of sympathy there considering the sheer number of visitors. I want to have visitors, but it's just, you know, what we're trying to do is address our local residents.
It's just a question. When you say an additional 1%,
Yeah.
and championing that through the legislature,
Yeah.
who is the champion? Because who is the champion in Cook County?
Right.
Because I don't feel VisiCook County as your destination marketing and management organization is that voice.
Yeah.
So.
The chamber would be the hope. And that's why I was, yeah.
So as a chamber member, we already have our lobbyist teed up to rally for the endorsement of the 1% if you all approve the endorsement going forward or those emails were to do that. I really feel that's going to get pretty confusing
Sure.
because of this. And I said it to you all last week at the HRA meeting. The optic on housing needs to be, needs to stay with, and I wrote this to you as well. Although there is this optic that tourism is creating this, you know, drastic depletion of housing, part of that is not true. And I think people need to stay not siloed to tourism being the housing problem. That's really important to understand. There's many, many of our major lodges that employ the most tourism employees that have taken care of their housing issues. So it's a lot, I mean, this goes back 25 years, our housing issue. And it has never been addressed along the spectrum of years. That's the piece that's really important to, to make sure.
Yeah. Mr. Storley is next.
Thank you.
Well, our housing needs are so big. So, you know, if you say to the legislature, we want to change it and be able to take some money off of the 1%, a couple hundred thousand, where does that go with the housing needs that we have? I think it's a drop in the bucket and I, I just don't like to tweak something that's already so good and worthy and what we're already doing in the community. That's why going on to the second one.
Right.
Getting into HRA and hiring someone to direct that. They have the resources to be able to help us with that. I don't want to take Peter to pay Paul.
And I would support that strongly. I, you know, that's what I was trying to say, that we have such a successful use of that 1%. We have built our shoulder seasons. We have created full-time jobs here in the county and president. And from individuals I spoke to on the chamber, people from the Duncan, Duncan Trail, Sunnyside Always group and from the non-competitors that I've heard of. They appreciate and want that 1% and need that. And I think, again, let's not mess with it. And let's look at the housing issue in a different fashion. I would like to see AMC work on housing because it's a problem not just in Cook County. It's not unique to us and it's everywhere.
And that's, that's, I'm so glad you brought AMC because it is, we all know that's a statewide issue. We hear that. I think there'd be a lot of support from AMC. And so perhaps they could be the champion instead of Vinnie Erickson. And that might be a much better strategy because I do recognize that that did get confusing and muddy and need to stay focused and keep things separate. And she would know much better than me about how to navigate on that. So that's probably a much stronger approach if we were to do that. But again, I, I guess we should maybe talk more about that potential pushback and the need by and from the chamber. And as members of the chamber, I hope you could give some perspective on just, I know there are other lodging facilities that say, that's awesome. Like, bring, bring, if that's, if that's a viable way to fund some housing, let's do that, recognizing and looking at that. So do you have perspective on that?
When is the 3% up for a little?
Doesn't appear to be.
So no, never sense it. I really don't. I just, my concern is mainly that it's, I just think it's a different bucket than lodging. I mean, as, you know, Odyssey Resorts, we represent a lot of different counties that have different properties. What makes Cook County so unique is that we hold so many more year-long employees. And it is directly because of the 1%. We're able to, just in the last short while, we have 20 more full-time people, 20 more of those, 20, 15 of those are homeowners. And that's a, you know, those are, those are homeowners that we brought to the community. These are not people looking for seasonal lodging. And seasonal lodging is a difficulty. But we are, and all the, you know, all the big players, at least in LTier, poised to invest in lodging and have invested in lodging. And, or, I'm sorry, housing. We're, we're investing. We're investing and would love to be part of an effort. I don't know if collecting that through an additional lodging tax is, is precedent. I don't want to see Cook County be put into a position where we have a higher tax rate than anybody else in the county. Or anybody else in the state. So, but I believe that there's efforts and I believe that there's a lot of partners within the lodging ownership that would become, and we've done, you know, the Quad Pod or the One Room project. We, we hold the leases, or we secure leases on those properties. Meaning if they sit empty, we still pay for them. And we did a collaborative to make sure that there was sustainable housing available. And we are poised to do more of that. I just don't know this flooding through lodging. I see people looking for housing all the time. It's teachers, it's border patrol agents, it's, it's enforcement agents. I know two that are, can't find housing. It's not just.
Well, yeah, so it's like, we've got, okay, so we look at the fund of housing, right? How do we do that? There's grants, those are competitive, there's, you know, state and federal grants. So we can go for that and we hope to hopefully look for more information. Property tax, the burden is on residents. There's sales tax, burden is on residents and visitors, maybe leading for tourist visitors. Then there's lodging tax, the burden is on all visitors. And so in the interest of locals, residents, that's where I would jump to is the lodging tax. And, um, you know, if that's the kind of information we need, if, if that type of tax would make Cook County less of a destination or less desirable, less competitive, that's important to know. I'm skeptical that it would affect things too much. But, but again, I would know as well as you all, so.
You know, and I, I guess I haven't thought about it before, so I don't know completely, but it seems like a 5% lodging tax is pretty stupid.
Yeah, nothing to sneeze at, yeah.
And I'll bring it back to the covenants. It would be way outside of anything, but I think whatever here, ever.
Well, have you ever heard of a short-term lodging tax or a short-term rental tax block patiently?
We have lifted some heavy loads everywhere.
That's, that's something to do, you know? So I think it's really, it's such a big issue statewide that we need to, but I, I hear, that's, I'm really pleased with AMC discussion because.
They have policies committees, departments, willing to give us fall and it's a great place to have this.
But they're going to be faced with the same dilemma. Where does it come from?
That's right. But all money has to come from somewhere. And it's a statewide issue. And I think we need statewide organizations to.
And so how do, how do people feel about that breakdown of grants, property tax, sales tax, and lodging tax? On that spectrum, where would you see housing funding being most successful and most, most potential or least abrasive? And everyone, anyone can pour.
I, I think you laid it out well. I think this, the, you know, when you look at it from a sales tax, that's everyone that visits and everybody that lives here, you know, deals with that. And so it's shared across everyone. But that also has an impact on the experience when folks come up as well, right? It's not negligible. So you have to look at that perspective. The lodging tax, you know, the locals, you know, when you look at it from a local resident perspective, we say, well, that's great if that's, if that's what you believe is driving the issue, right? And, and there's certainly counterpoints to that, that it's, it's a piece of an issue. And, and there's certainly counterpoints to that, that it's, it's a piece of an issue. It's not the issue.
Wait, can you repeat that part?
I said, you put it on lodging tax and then people say, well, you put the burden all on the people that are visiting here.
Yep.
And it, that's, that's great for people that live here, Dave, but it isn't necessarily that, that's. For people that believe that the visitors have driven up the cost and bought up homes and turned them into rentals and this type of thing, they're going to believe that's the solution. That's not necessarily what we're hearing is the issue. It's a piece of what's causing the problem, but it's not the whole problem.
But how does that, how does the lodging tax, where is the bridge between the lodging tax and the root of the problem? Or what, I want to know the problem.
The people, you have people in the community that believe it's the number of visitors that come here and the popularity through the advertising that is driving up the cost of housing overall. And so therefore the solution in the simplest form would, would land it on lodging.
Oh, well, see, we need spin then because where I was coming from.
But that's my point. You gotta, you gotta take into consideration, there are parts of the community that believe that. And so if you, if you're going to, if you're going to dispel that, you're going to have to put forth information that's credible, that is going to say, you know, that's, that's not the whole problem, folks, you know? Otherwise you'll have a hard time getting the community behind any efforts we're taking. I guess that's where I'm trying to explain that.
Okay.
Well, so just, you know, we've been doing some research into other types of tax, you know, alongside of, and we're not, I'm certainly not a tax expert.
Sure, no, all right.
But, you know, 8.735% sale tax is collected in Cook County. And our understanding is that the 6.75% goes directly back to the state general fund and then gets redistributed among counties based on population.
That's correct.
Why isn't there more of a discussion at the state? Redistributing it less on population and more on where that's coming from? Because if we're contributing a fair amount via sales tax because of tourism, because we're used to day service, why aren't we getting more of that back in our budget? That seems like a better place to start, in my opinion, because you're reaching not just people who are staying overnight, which is what we're concerned with, but our visitorship comes from more than just that place. Comes from a lot of different places. And it does, yes, locals pay sales tax, but we also choose to pay that sales tax when we're participating in making a sale in our town, just as we would buy something at Target and Delupe. So, you know, it seems like if this is a state issue, why are we trying to create a solution that only solves it for Cook County?
Oh, no, this is, this could be potential. There are 300 or something of HRAs in the state, so any HRA would be getting the funding from a local option, lodging tax. When you're talking about the distribution of sales tax, I believe that gets an official disparity and that's center box baby. And that's enough that I think it's more than uphill battle.
I, I think though, what we're trying to say is that lodging tax in that same light is an uphill battle. And not everybody is going to have the same opinion that lodging has the breadth of ability to continue to get taxed statewide to solve this problem.
Yeah.
Not everybody has an economy like Cook County where there is such lodging to be able to support additional tax dollars towards fixing housing. That happens to be something that's new to us.
Yeah.
And I want to add that, I just, I feel like we need to recognize that there's an ebb and flow of tourism. It has ebbed and flowed over the course of its tourism path here in Cook County. We're coming out of a pandemic. We all know that that persona of tourist is that they're going to drive to a destination. Sure. Throw in the great marketing that Visit Cook County has done for the last 11 years of its existence. But there's another whole side of this equation. And, you know, if you're looking at a Mike Larson behind me, he's lived through the 2008 crush, you know, where there wasn't people coming here and the streets were empty and our community felt it and our employees felt it. And that was, that was very, very much voice to me when I came in 2013, that we really wanted to create a sustainable 12-year economy that could keep people employed. And we've done a lot of that good work. So back to don't mess with it, that's where I say, don't mess with it. Find another spot that it might work. I'm excited about an HRA because I think of things like, let's incentivize private investors. Let's get the city on board to say, okay, yeah, we've got these great lots, you know, owned by the EDA of Cedar Grove. Let's incentivize by putting in, we'll put in your water and your septic and your electricity you put in the house, something, you know? There's ways outside of free energy grants that we can work at. So to me, that HRA is like, yes.
The HRA can only do what it is funded, you know? So that's where it's like, I already funded the HRA. So that's why I'm like, oh, in fact, what you're saying may not be, it might be an uphill battle. But that's why I laid out all the taxes. Those are our options. Which one's the least hazardous?
So like an HRA has its funding sources, so do destination marketing organizations and use of lodging tax.
Yep.
So to your point, it would be running it up the fly pole that is, yeah, it's going to put us at risk, I think, with the 1% renewal.
I think, yes, for optics, I think it's so important that we try to stop co-mangling the conversations. Because as much as we can, we're even doing it. We're co-mangling the conversation of lodging and this 1%. And that's, I think, where, where it gets confusing to people and we can lose something that's really working well, is that we have, we kind of have this one or the other kind of process that's kind of being absorbed by the community. And I don't think it's, I think it's too, I mean, very important conversation. I think absolutely we need to focus on it. I just don't know if we can co-mangle the two.
Yeah, I'm trying to garnish and separate. And I think that AMC might be the best way to separate that. I think there's, you're right, there still is a risk. But if we start talking lodging tax at the HRA and they look at our, our destination, blah, 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 and see that 1%, then there might be a correlation. They might look at both, but.
I just want to add a little personal perspective too. So I've got one foot in this tourism road and one foot in the housing challenge world. Because I've been a Cook County resident without a home since February. And, you know, it's interesting to kind of step back and look at it from me kind of trying to analyze all this, put some information together from you guys. Yeah, you know, I think this piece, which is a new piece today, does a great job really kind of breaking down what this equals. And for me, in one word, vibrancy. Think of support to great local nonprofits, events that those nonprofits have put on, music. And these are all elements and reasons why I wanted to be here in the first place. And so to put that at risk or to lose that for housing or at these pieces, I think I'm not the only one that would want to be here because of those pieces. Yeah. And logic for us that at a certain age.
Yeah, I mean, we talked, we talked about that in our office too, about just trying to ask people more explicitly, like, what brought you here? Was it, did you find out about Cook County and you slanted isolation? Or did you come here because of the reason we all live here? Because it's beautiful and it offers a lot of opportunity to have a full and rich life? And a lot of that is because of our tourism economy. And, you know, I say that also as somebody who's currently looking for housing, you know? And I grew up here and six generations from Cook County. It's a problem, as Linda has mentioned, that is outside of just tourism. And I don't know that lodging tax is the silver bullet that we're looking for.
No, there is no silver bullet.
There is no.
That's a myth.
Correct.
Oh, you have made those. Yeah, no, it's, it's just a tool. HRA is not going to solve our problems. A well-funded HRA is not going to solve our problems. But it's a really strong tool and I really want to dig into that. And this is a terrible thing to say, forgive me. But if I have to choose between housing funding and this 1%, it's clear which way I need to choose. I don't believe I need to choose. I think we can do both and that's what I want to work towards. And I don't want to jeopardize it at all. So that's what, that's what my focus is like, you know?
I appreciate that and I, I really know that this is going to happen. If you, if there's a unanimous vote by this body to endorse our pursuit, it's the pursuit that's going to be another heavy lift.
Right, right.
It's going to all come back to you if it gets endorsed by the legislatures for the final approval. So having, you know, significant buy-in at this point, I just don't want to run that same 100-yard dash right along HRA. It's separate from that. And putting this 1% at risk right now just doesn't feel good.
Yeah.
And so there is a lot of, it's going to be a hard conversation to have if we have the doubt within this body of endorsement.
How long, how long can we have 1% for?
The 1% will expire in November of 23.
May after.
But our, but our fiscal year starts May 1 of each year. So if we go through the next legislative process and we don't get approval at the state legislature, we will take a whole year to really unwind all the programming and event support through the next fiscal year. If we don't do it now and we don't get the endorsement and go through this process now, it'll be like, okay, sorry, sorry, local musicians, you are not getting reimbursed at any, you know, there's a lot of programming and funding that will go away.
I didn't, I didn't ask clearly, I'm sorry. And thank you for meaning the consequences. If we, if we, if we get, if we sail through, we renew the 1% lodging tax after November of 2023, how long is it going to be? Can, is that something we can work on?
Yep, yep.
So would, might we want to propose for longer or?
We should propose for, to never have it sunset unless we bring it back. So we don't like to go through this again, just like the 3%.
Because where I'm going with that is putting it in jeopardy or trying not, right? If we can ensure that, the process of AMC is going to not be fast. And so I see less jeopardy because of the process, like as well as the lack of conflict of, you know, the chamber lobbyists and AMC lobbyists, you know, just, it seems like if we could have our A and D, it's. I see, I see concerning your eyes.
Yes, I have some concerns.
Please share your concerns.
This is a really hard issue. And I'm elected by taxpayers, so I'm hearing community. I totally understand where you're coming from. I was in the tourism business. I know how much you affected our business. Don't want to take that away, but we have a housing crisis in Cook County. We do. I really would like to see Visit Cook County and the chamber, Judy Erickson, help us figure that out. Because if you help us figure that out, we wouldn't be really having this discussion today. It's because the community is telling us, Visit Cook County does too much. They're too good. Take some of their money. It's hard to explain to them. We can't just take it. But that's, I'm saying, we could tweak it. Not that that's the best option on the table, but I'm asking for help. We need to come up with really good options to help or solve or fund our HRA to get somebody in that position. We have to come up with something. And I don't think right now the taxpayers of Cook County, the regular taxpayers, have an appetite for an increased levy so that everything can stay the same. So that's my frustration. I'm asking for your actual help and support. Let's come up with a joint solution that we can compromise on.
Stacy, I'm always available. In fact, we're unusual, we, Cook County, Minnesota, because of our tourism economy. My peers in the industry across the state and the Midwest and the nation for that matter, there's less percentages that sit in the seat that I sit in and have the relationships with the county, the EDA, the chamber. It's an unusual, it's an unusual position. So I'm all about sitting and helping. I also want to make sure that we are educating along the way, which is part of what the work that we're doing is trying to educate our community members. I say it again and again and again, housing isn't just a tourism problem. We have a great housing, we have a great tourism economy. That isn't, doesn't have a golden fence around it where it's not going to ebb and flow. We need to stay steady on the course. We pivot and shift all the time. We have not done any marketing all summer. We shifted all of our voice inward. For a year, we did hand in hand with public health. There was a lot of work that was done by Visit Cook County that ran right up to the state, the guidebook, which was a big help, not other. There's not other destination marketing organizations that had that kind of depth to be able to do that together. I'm so proud of the work we did. So I guess I'm just saying that the education piece is important and it's more important to let our county community members know that are paying tax, that they're not paying the lodging tax. But the lodging tax is coming back to them in programming and events in really good ways. It's supporting that musician that might live next door. And so there's all kinds of things that that lodging tax, how, the communication and education on how that lodging tax affects our community members. And they don't pay it. And it's covenants around use do not allow it to be used for housing.
Well, I guess, I, just to clarify, are you, are you thinking that AMC maybe isn't the best avenue for our approach here or what are you?
Well, I think we should definitely work through AMC.
Yeah.
But just like the classification issue, where we came together as a community with one voice, one plan, it was a compromise. Not everybody got what they wanted. I'd really like us to do the same thing, but how are we going to fund our HRA?
Yeah.
And I think just like you said, Stacy, that you're representing like the taxpayers in the community, but there's also the representation of the tax collectors of the community that, you know, these large tax collectors are the businesses, are the lodging businesses. And the lodging businesses that are collecting the tax are supporting the tax. And so I think that's something to be considered is that me as an individual, I am not impacted by this. I understand that there's a lodging connection, but here, there are people that are collecting the tax are very vested in. And I just, I wanted to just bring one thing up just because my husband and I recently purchased a property in Leeley and opened some of their, some of their town council stuff. And they have, they have to, they haven't, their short-term rental issue is, is the same as here. They're worried that the short-term rentals are, are being bought up with replacement of long-term rentals. And so they've capped it, you know, there's a cap on the number of short-term rentals that can continue in their area because they see it depleting their, their long-term housing situation, which isn't going to be popular for, you know, even my company, that idea. But there is something like that where, where eventually, how many more beds do you need here?
I love that point. That's really important. Just so you all know, the Visit Cook County Board of Directors, lodging, many of them large, large property owners, have all endorsed this renewal. They see the benefit and the value. So Picka, Lutzen Mountains, that pays upwards of most of the properties that I'm talking about, the large properties that are taking care of their housing that have endorsed this, are paying six figures in property taxes. There's a benefit here. I mean, like, it's like, let's make sure we understand the voice of the property owners that have endorsed this renewal and their other contribution outside of the collection of lodging tax from other vendors.
Um, what kind of compromise were you thinking, Mr. Hopkins? Like I, yeah, what, I guess. And I'm clearly not seeing the whole picture here because I'm like, yes to 1% and I'm, I'm all in on 1% with AMC. And, and I see those as two clear paths. But you're, you're kind of maybe looking at other paths? Or what are you, what are other options or compromises?
I just want to make sure we think about everything. I don't want to take anything off the table here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I would say that, that, you know, I strongly support the 1% of Visit Cook County. I want us to really dig in on the statewide level of the AMC because this is a statewide issue.
I want us to really dig in on the statewide level of AMC because this is a statewide issue, it's not just here. And the other pieces, we're forgetting that if we form an HRA, just like Mary Somas has brought $5 million in five years to the EDA, that's what the director of the HRA is going to do. Their job is to go out and get state and federal money. And I think we need to personally create this HRA to get that mechanism going. And while that's starting up, we need to work with AMC, or the state law, to get the work down that our entire state.
That's all, yeah.
We just need to remember that, that grants and funding requires our local buy-in. We need to have some money to match those grants or provide the public questions. So that's what, I just wanted to make sure we don't, it's like, oh, $125,000 for an EDA director, or, you know, HRA director is going to, they're going to give some free money. No, we got to come up with another pile of money.
Well, I don't know, and I haven't heard any updates, but I believe our tax capacity is decreasing. And so, you know, whereas we can increase the levy, the tax burden on individuals will increase.
That's correct.
Yeah, and so, that's my hope, but I don't know if we can bank on that yet. Uh, so time will tell there, but that's where I'm hoping. Because I hear, I hear the concern too about the tax burden, and that's why I'm looking at the lodging, you know, side of things. But we'll see, we'll see how the numbers shake out with the tax capacity. But, and then there's the highway budget too. Yeah, it's, uh, yeah, the time will tell, I think, there. I think, um, yeah, my, my big takeaway so far today has just been the importance of, and I need to have further conversations, I think, I hope all of us do, with Representative Ekland and Senator Bach, just about how they see the lay of the land, and, because I'll be very forthcoming with them and say, we do not want to jeopardize the 1%. And so what we're thinking about the AMC path is that you feel like that's enough of a separation, or are you going to be seeing parallels there? And we'll see what they say about that, but, uh, that's kind of my big takeaway, is how that's going to happen. Because originally I was thinking, get the Chamber on board, get Judy on board, and we'll just go for two, you know? And, uh, I see that as being problematic. And for that, we haven't had an HRA fund yet, so. There's that, and there's a process there and time there, and a learning curve, and a board formation, and my laws creation. I mean, it's, it's going to be a bit of work here, we're not going to just be able to throw money at it if we were to get something.
And certainly the big takeaway from this discussion is we're all learning from each other and gaining perspectives, and we need to educate the people of Cook County as to what are the issues, and to, what is the lodging tax, and what are your F O Q? I think education and working together to develop our HRA and work forward with the housing issues is, is what I think.
Commissioner Hopkins here.
Yeah, I have a question for Linda, which you might not be able to answer, but, so if this board decided we wanted to pursue a 1% additional sales tax, I don't know that we could since we already have one, but, okay, let's just say we try to do that. Would the Chamber and the Visitors Bureau be supportive of that, do you think?
Well, first of all, I'm a conduit for a 12-member board, and it would go right back to the 12-member board to see how we want to endorse that kind of process. And that's the way we operate with anything, whether it's supporting the Gypsy Daddy Trail or writing a letter of support for visit to leave, that's how we operate.
That's what I said, you thought you could.
I can't answer that directly, then we go back to the board of.
What do you think this feeling out there would be?
Pardon?
Do you have a sense of? Yeah.
So you said sales tax.
I'm saying sales tax.
An additional sales tax, that would be, you have to think about who's paying that sales tax again.
Oh, you said sales tax.
I said sales tax, because we've always said we can't do lodging tax, so I'm using the word sales tax.
I don't, I don't, I don't, I personally, I feel that that's appropriate.
That, that's the sales tax you feel?
That's me personally, that's certainly, for this camera out there, not Visit Cook County.
We're just talking ideas.
Board members, not.
This is a great starting discussion, so you can throw.
I mean, if it was sales tax, maybe it wouldn't have to be 1%, maybe it would be a smaller portion of the money.
Right.
It's like, we know, even in, you know, Kermont Town, the state may be selling out, something like that. I mean, there's other, it's, it's very difficult to conversation, talk anything about sales tax. It doesn't have to be 1%, it can be a smaller percentage of sales tax.
Historical perspective, and one of the reasons that one of our key partners is Lutzen Mountains, is that when Visit Cook County was being formed, there was a conversation that took place to collect a 1% lodging component for retail and dining establishments. There was no appetite for that at that time. And over the course of my tenure here, just over eight years, I've been encouraged to see what that looks like. And, you know, pandemic, great marketing, as it's turned out, I've never felt like I have the true belief in going after that additional 1%. Now, for me, if you're going to collect additional dollars, and for all the voices that we hear underneath the housing, then I feel personally, that that makes sense. Everybody's, everybody's saying, we need housing, we need housing, we need housing, so let's, let's find some additional dollars somehow to be able to support that. And then once again, as the director of Tourism for here, I will always sit at the table and be able to try and talk truth, you know, that it isn't, it isn't just a tourism problem. And that's the piece of, you know, that gets us a little riled in the office, just like, it might be, there's certain issues in people for you. I mean, I really want people to be educated on this, as a fact. There are more people outside of tourism looking for housing than there are actual hospitality frontline workers.
I, I feel like I've brought it down a little too simply with the whole grants, property tax, sales tax, lodging, because when you get into sales tax, there's also feudal tax, there's also excise tax. We can tax tobacco products, we can tax alcohol, kind of decan of the state. There are tools. Where it is, there'll be a tax on marijuana, you know, in the distant future. So there are plenty of different tools. And I guess that's where our senator representative is going to have a lot better perspective. It'll get messy at AMC, that's for sure.
I mean, can I just?
Please.
Pose this question, you know, we came to the table with this renewal of the 1%, and the conversation about housing has been going on for such a long time.
Yeah.
Would lodging tax have been the solution that this county board would have come to had we not come to the table with the idea of this renewal at this point?
Well, we get updates on most sales tax and lodging tax every month.
Absolutely.
And so we see those numbers, and it's just kind of like, uh.
It would have certainly been part of the discussion.
It would have been part of the discussion, but at the level that the public and that this board has connected it, you know, that's, I guess that's my question, you know, would it have been the top item on the list for us to really examine? Or would we have gone down to these other paths first?
That was the one I heard first from the public.
Correct.
The very first one.
I think it is timing. Timing, because we're in a high-demand period, and people are waiting line everywhere. You know, it's just, you know, it's the timing of the, it's the timing of realizing how, just how in-demand that community is, and how short-staffed we are, we relate that to not having enough beds, and then we relate that to being too busy. And I think that's the, I think it's just the timing.
Perfect storm.
Perfect.
So you asked a good question, was there a, were you leading this?
I'm just, no, I just, you know, just in thinking about what Linda was talking about, keeping the issues separate, and really talking about this 1% renewal, you know, we, we have ramped up these conversations about the HRA, about housing and needing to solve that problem, and I don't complain, but the County is just seeing that at all. I think it's just a matter of recognizing, we have a timeline with this specific tax renewal, and looking at the issues separately, though they're both very important, we need to stick to the lane of what this renewal is. You know, and that doesn't mean deciding not to be a part of the conversation about housing in the future, but I don't think it's as simple as saying, well, instead of renewing for 1% for event support, let's renew for an HRA. It just seems like that, that's part of, it just seems like that got crossed.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think it can be boiled down too by the, the big collectors of this, this huge budget, are self-solving their lodging, their housing problems, for the majority. And so I think that's where it comes, becomes a little disconnected for me, is that I know who the, who has in housing crisis, and those of us, we are all in that, true. But the people collecting the lodging tax are solving their own lodging, or solving their own housing crisis with, you know, their own funds. So that's where it becomes a little disconnected.
Sure.
Yeah, explanation is okay, but it's a great thing to say.
Well, uh, here's me going on a limb again, but if I was to read the situation, you know, it, how I interpret it is there is, there are skepticism, but support for the 1% renewal. And so, uh, that's just me trying to give, give reassurance. And that may not be true, it's the relevant here, but that's, that's my read on it, so.
Can I ask a question on what your timeline is? And also, I know that you received a number of letters of support.
Yeah.
Um, what's the timeline on? Maybe you've already read the letters of support.
Yes.
Okay, and then what's your timeline on your vote for endorsement?
Uh, we haven't said anything, but I think that's, we can do it next meeting, I don't know. I mean, I guess I've heard other commissioners, if you want more time to talk more with more people, or, I feel like I'm not saying something, I've talked to, I've talked to people, uh, quite a few about it, and gotten quite a bit of, um, personal anecdotes, as well as, as well as concerns, and, and again, it does cross, those conversations cross often, but, and, and we've not received the correspondence, so I don't know if we want more time, or if we can put it on next, next meetings or next agenda.
I feel like I've submitted to many, many constituents, and we'll be ready to make a decision. I'm not, I'm not there yet, I got a phone call just last night. So, um, yeah, I'm not there. But this isn't going to go to St. Paul until April, May, right? I mean, it's not like.
A lot of work that needs to be done, and so we would be bringing it to Senator Bach and Representative Ekland when they come for their visits October 29th and 30th.
Yeah, I totally, yeah, I, yeah.
And there's a lot of, there's a lot of work to be done, which is, you know, the reason I ask the question is, what more can I bring to you through my Board of Directors and the team at Visit Cook County? If there's additional information that you need, I would like to hear what that is. Or I'm always available to talk to, like you said, you just had a phone call. You can always say to anybody, call Linda, you know, just go down and visit, because I am available all the time to have a conversation and to answer tough questions. So know that that's an option for you, Commissioner.
I appreciate that, I don't feel right doing that, uh, because we're the ones making the votes, and so we need to have that, but I know I can, and I have reached out to you, so I appreciate that, that you're available and just, but I feel like I need to be accountable, personally, I don't know about other commissioners. We need to know what we're talking about, right?
Commissioner Thorly, do you need anything, do either of you?
So it's, um, just as, no, for just, all right, could, could you help us, help me understand too about your conversation last night, and just the question? Because we need to know about where this confusion lies, crossing, or just, you know, more opinions.
Well, it was about, you know, the 1% versus the 3%, and we should use some of that 1%.
Was the person understanding the difference between the 2010 1% and the 2008 lodging 1%? Because that's another confusion point.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, sales tax.
Yeah, we, yeah. And that's not what I was writing this during, when, when's that, came off? Are we at our 1%?
Well, let's not, let's not cross the lines anymore.
More money than we could use.
Oh, yeah, three states, yeah, yeah. I think, yeah, no, Brady is, he had a, appointed, he had to attempt to, personally, or didn't.
So, yeah, no, um, it was just making sure that we are not just relying on property owners.
Right.
That we are talking about everything, different funding sources.
So to, so to, so to bring it all back, uh, it sounds like four of us are, are comfortable, or five of us comfortable having the next agenda?
Beginning of September, I'm not sure.
Next meeting is on August 24th, for you all, okay?
Right, yeah, so, that's, because that's where I would, that's where I would like to put it, from kind of the feedback and, uh, the feedback and timing and schedule. Sorry, I guess we have the 24th, and then the 14th of September are, are meeting dates. And so how does the 14th of September sit with E C C?
I just, I, I would only say that I would like to allow the most time possible to work with our Chamber and Judy Erickson, our bringing Judy up to date, and having the most time to prepare for the visit with Senators, Senator Bach and Representative Ekland. And six weeks doesn't feel as good as two months.
Well, frankly, I, that's where I need more time, not for this vote per se, but that's where I need more time, as with Representative Ekland and Senator Bach. That's where I need to focus my time now, or my conversation around this issue. And so I'd appreciate more time before their visit too, to try to get the platters off the table. But what I'm trying to find, I guess, solution on this, what, how we can make you more comfortable with voting, uh, the 24th. Is it just an illumination sort of? Well, no, I think, yeah, well.
I, I prefer the 14th.
Right. That's right.
Have a chicken bone, what you want.
I, yeah, so that's where I would be saying, I think there's four of us that are ready for the 24th, or will be. I want to make, I want to help you be ready for the 24th.
I do too.
That's what I'm trying to get at, but we'll put it on the, uh, agenda for the 24th, and, and I'll do what I can to bring us all on the same, very similar page, like, get the information we need.
And if I can provide anything for you.
Well, I was going to say, if this isn't clear to the rest of the group, one of Commissioner Hopkins' strengths is the data and going through that, and so that might be part of, I'm assuming part of that, um, because I do, I do like data too.
I do too.
Sure, but it's not necessarily the strength. And so, uh, if there's more data that we need to gather, that's why I'm going to help.
We just had a wonderful, because we all look at it differently, we, we are a small team at Visit Cook County, and we had Jim Boyd come in and have a very thoughtful presentation and discussion with our team so we could understand property sales, and, and how everything intersects. And it was very, very beneficial, just on a baseline understanding, so. I'm all about data, I'm all about.
Does that record it?
Did we record it?
It was very helpful.
It was.
Jim has a huge perspective on the different taxes, he brought in some great resources for it. Were they able to break it down from the state level with property tax to?
Were they able to break it down from the state level with property tax to, um, you know, what residents are paying versus what, you know, they resort, owners pay and where that goes.
That's interesting.
It was really, really, really helpful for us to sort of understand in our own eyes too, you know, not to use strong language, but that myth about the burden of property tax coming from the local resident.
Yeah.
And just how do our tourism economy goes to benefit all of us?
The future, pal? Yep. I'm already not here. Okay, great. Well, that's all of that. Some other commissioners have, uh, some other items they want to bring up there. We've gone through, I have two presentations of the lodging tax. I have three, the discussion funding standing for, for housing. Um, and there's just the minutes. Anything, anyone else wants to bring up? We're adjourned. Thank you for your...
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
No, I'm right, okay. I've got like the, find my paper?
Yeah.
But actually, I just, my, my cord, so...
I know. I forgot to charge my computer this morning, sorry. You better plug, bring your cord.
Oh, just on the Zoom screen.